So people are listening, let's do a roll call. Do you want to start, Marcia?
Councilmember Martin.
Mayor Peck.
Councilmember Diana Christ.
Councilmember Shamacoi.
Councilmember Dabro. Councilmember Robert Kistwill will be absent tonight and Councilmember Hedago Ferri will be here shortly. So we're just going to give updates on boards and commissions and talk about whatever you want to talk about. And then after that, I want to bring up the Jew and teeth because I have some concerns. So I'm just going to open it up to liaison reports. You want to go, Marcia?
Yes.
First names only, by the way.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
How nice. How good to know. So I guess the two things that are going on is that the airport is having an airshow. It's not for a while yet. It's in September or October. Enough time, the exact dates, even though it's already nailed down, I can tell you that later. But after having missed quite a few for several different reasons, they really seem to have gotten their act together. They are reaching out to the aerospace firms in the area. And here comes Suzie.
Hi.
Hi, Suzie.
Hello. And a variety of different planes. They're hoping to have an electric training plane, although I think that's not confirmed yet, but should be a lot to see. And the board is working well to contribute with the volunteers without violating any laws. So I'm really excited that that's going to happen. First year I was on council, or the first full year I was on council, they had an airshow and it was great. You could climb on the airplanes and mess up their paint job with your gravel in your shoe and stuff like that. But this one should be amazing. And that one, 2018 one was, I believe, the last one they had.
So, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because they really only have them every two or three years anyway for budgetary reasons and volunteer recruitment reasons and all that stuff. So, yeah, we've missed. It'll be a good thing and I hope we have great news about the airport to energize that event. Nothing, I don't think anything special is going on other than that. You know, everybody's just doing their stuff. Okay. Diane?
Well, let Suzie get settled.
Yes, please.
All right, let's see. I'm on the asset forfeiture committee with the mayor. We haven't had nothing so far, but I just want to say there's been some things in the private sector that come up, so maybe we'll get called up for that at some point. Longmont Economic Development Partnership. It's been an interesting meeting. We talked about the House Bill, what is that?
Ten thirteen?
Ten thirteen. No, ten thirty.
Or thirteen thirteen something.
Thirty, yeah. Okay. What about transportation? And they're interested in participating and taking a position on legislative issues. So some discussion about that, I believe the vote was to support it. And then the North I-25 Coalition, that came up also and the vote was to not support it until amendments came through. So interesting, different perspectives.
Diane, what were their objections to if they wanted to mend it out?
You know, I was afraid somebody was going to ask me that question because there was quite a list and so I was saying, I'm not going to remember all of this. But the concerns are the time of commute is one of them, so I guess that would go to the speed of the train. I don't know that that can be amended, but maybe a more defined path and where stops would be helpful. The, it's the North I-25 Coalition, so they're also working on the bus staying at the same time, so they're comparing, you know, is the train going to be more advantageous to that? So that's basically what they're looking for. There was a short list, if you want, and some of it was kind of detailed.
Just curious.
And not something that I necessarily was ready to, and I love about that. So they'll be supportive with certain amendments. The Visit Longmont, we reviewed our CEO, she got high marks. They're still planning the climbing competition in February. When you think about it, in August, that's only six months away. Hoping that the microtransit will be very available then and to have maps so that people that attend that can participate in all the businesses within Longmont. So, let's see, we meet tomorrow, so we're actually going to meet and we're having an orientation for new board members because we also took on some staff as consultants with Visit Longmont. Then the mayor and I are on the fire and police pension boards too. And what has been interesting about that, we met back in February, but the city contracts with a third party that gives us market information. And one of the things that I keep coming back to is out of all that the Federal Reserve has done to control inflation, in their graphs that they gave us, the only two things that have been affected have been automobiles and fuel, you know, energy as well, mostly gasoline in terms of bringing down the price. And so I just keep coming back to it and discussing with, you know, Longmont Economic Development about business situations with supply chain and with some of my clients also. Back in the seventies, they, when it was persistent inflation, they called it stagflation. You know, it's kind of a funny name, but having nothing to do with male deer, but stag.
Or single man.
Yeah. But what's interesting about that, I guess, is at this time in the year, after April fifteenth, everybody's kind of reviewing their budget and considering, you know, their purchases for the next year and how are they going to manage expenses? And at the same time, and maybe you all have received some constituent concerns about, oh, the newest one was a fee that NextLife imposed on someone that put their service on hold. And, you know, all these little things add up to maybe a hundred more dollars per month for a household. So one of the things that the city can do, looking back at when there was a period of stagflation, one of the things the city can do is hold the line and not react to the market because it's something that the city and the government can't provide where the market is being very, you know, heavy. And there was even some, that occurred recently, is that someone did not get their delivery of Diet Pepsi. Isn't that an odd thing to be short on supply? The thing is...
Did they bring that to you as a council person?
It was, yeah, it was a business.
Oh.
Yeah. And they said, you know, we just haven't been able to get our Diet Pepsi's delivery.
Get on a diet.
Get on a diet. There is some, and we've had this conversation about supply chain. There is some withholding until the price, you know, achieves whatever they feel like they need to make in their budget. Well, there's a way to say they're adjusting their budget or they're, you know...
There's been a big problem in Europe.
Yeah, there's costs that they're trying to cover. And so I'm just saying, as a city, we need to always look at, let's just stay level, not react to the market. That's one of the things we can do for our constituents. So that's all I'm involved in, so.
Well, I, the golf board was canceled last month and they haven't had the meeting this month. Prab, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, had their meeting and they're acquiring some land up near Bud Rock. Some logical locations to kind of keep that area more controlled by Longmont, which is, I think, probably a good thing and it's a good purchase of land and keeping it for the open space purposes and that's a location that, you know, is pretty logical. Then the Longmont Public Media, they met last night. In short, we are working on more of some bylaws and rules. We're trying to, this board has got a couple of folks that haven't shown, so we're trying to get some more fresh new faces on the board. Expand it to about seven and then my capacity would be probably more of a non-voting member like the other boards that many of us serve on, which is probably a good thing because they already have a financial board and so we don't need two. And particularly when they have contract with the city, I think it's probably wise for us to have a person there, you know, the councilman, but not necessarily somebody who's, who potentially could affect their financial status since then they, you know, maybe say, well, that was the city's heavy influence from the city council member or something like that. So it's probably wise that not have us as voting members. And that's, so they're trying to get seven members total and then a council member and then they'll have Sergio or some, that are Sergio therefore, to run the meeting or to be the kind of staff liaison. Did I miss anything on that, Marcia?
Not run the meeting.
Yeah, not run the meeting, but be there to kind of be a staff supporter.
Yeah.
And then the last one, why I left it to last is the Consortium of Cities. They had some interesting folks to talk about their, how they're dealing with some of the sharps and other things that they're finding and that they're putting on all their county buildings and everything and a couple of things that they were doing in regards to, they were providing people, because you're much more likely apparently to have a very serious overdose from injection than you are from, if you smoke, you know, things like crack and other things like that. And so they're providing actual pipes and ends in case people are sharing that sort of thing, which, like, everybody's eyes, you know, in all these cities are like going, what? You know, their eyes got super big. But they said, our data and the research that we've done and everything says this is probably safer to give them, provide them with that than to provide them with the needles and everything. So that was kind of interesting. They showed us a box of display things. They talked about, you know, how to get some of these supplies for the smaller communities and others. When the big issue was around the minimum wage issue. And I'll tell you, the smaller communities like Erie, Superior, Louisville, Lafayette, they keep saying, they're talking about it, but like Superior said, we've got potholes to fill and we've had this little problem in our community, you know, a Marshall fire. So they were really kind of putting it off. And so they're putting it off maybe till the summer. I talked to Sandy and she emailed me that we might see some sort of update in July. And I think many felt it was, the issue with that was that we hadn't gotten enough data back. We knew what we had done here with interviewing some businesses. And of course, many of the businesses, I repeated that, many of the businesses, you know, want, are saying they would just crush us, will take our business and go elsewhere. But, you know, as I told them there, I said, this is the market. The market is Longmont. They're going to wherever out east is, I don't think their employees are going to follow them, I told them. And I didn't think their, that their customers would necessarily follow them out that way. And if we implemented a minimum wage, you know, progressive minimum wage like it's being proposed, we're, they're not going to have employees there either because those employees are going to come this way where they're from places that are not, you know, supporting a minimum wage out that way. So that's, so their argument for it's going to crush us, it's probably not, not likely to be there. What they need to probably stop doing is they're, many of them are taking, they're part of, you know, what they make and then they're taking some of their employees part too, which is in the form of reduced wages. So that's, that's where they need to get kind of filled in there, where they stop, stop trying to take the employees portion, part that should be going to, some of the employees that probably would, in a fair and equitable situation, they probably would, probably find that they could not have a twenty dollar hamburger situation or some sort of thing like that. So I don't think that's necessarily absolutely across the board in all cases, but there is...
Well, wait a minute, can we have everybody report and then we'll open it up?
Yeah, I just had a question on that topic, but if Shakita and Suzie...
Yeah, let's wait.
Yeah, just then.
So is that the only one you reported?
That was the biggest one.
Okay.
Were you done with that? Oh, cool. Suzie, did you want to go? I don't want to step over you if you want to.
No, that's fine.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
I came last.
That's okay. So last night, we had transportation and very interesting because we had RTD there last night and I can't remember who was, the guy was on the board.
Eric Davidson?
Yeah. He was talking about, they were going to support Senate Bill one eighty-four, which was funding inner-city passenger rail. RT, you know, they're leading, RTD is leading the study for that. And also they were opposing House Bill fourteen forty-seven, which is a transit reform bill. They said it was, the structure of the bill was concerning to them. He was talking about the long-term financial outlook of, you know, for the, everything, their programming as far as like the youth is free for RTD right now. Seventy-five percent is dependent on their sales, on the sales tax right now. The Tabor expiration right now, the exemption for that, refinancing. These are like short notes that I took, so if you don't understand all of it, I'm sorry. They were saying what's at risk right now is the forty million they may have to refund through the Tabor. One of the other, they have a new police chief that's been there. I didn't know RTD had a police chief, so I was ignorant of that.
Me too.
Oh.
We all.
Maybe new.
Yeah, they have a new one. He's only been there maybe for about a year. They have a problem with retention of drivers due to high level of assaults to employees and increase of drug use and criminal activity. And also they need to train officers, so they're putting a lot of money for the, you know, for the officers and also mental health clinicians and de-escalating training for their officers. And so, and then also fit now, use has increased as well. And so they're not sure about keeping the youth program, keeping that free for the youth. And I think board member Wickland asked how much are they paying the employees because they're, like I said, the retention rate, they can't keep the employees. And they said they're almost twenty-six dollars an hour. But once they get them through the training, they get their CEO license and they're like, bye-bye. Yeah, so that's the issue right now. And so I asked, because they can't even tell us how many youth are actually using the buses.
They won't keep the data.
They're not, yeah, they don't have the data for that. So I asked, why don't you, for the summertime, like, get youth involved, let them paint the buses, have some type of travel program for the youth on the buses? What are they doing as far as the unhoused that are traveling on the buses? Because youth are, I mean, I'm sure that's a deterrent for youth to get on the buses if the, you know, if it's low passenger rate for youth that are not utilizing it. So how, if you can't tell us how many youth are using the buses, then it doesn't matter if it's for you or not? So, and then they had, what's her name, Scarlett again? She was speaking about...
Natalie?
Yes. She was speaking about the priority, the next priority is having a route going towards the hospital, like Costco area and all of that, by the Walmart. So, but that's priority, but yet they don't have a date. So anyway, I say what I have to say to them because she just kept referring to everything about Boulder, Boulder, Boulder. And I said, oh, interesting. You know, in our comp plan, we're talking about reducing the carbon footprint and we're talking about electrification and all of that. I said, if I was a new resident coming into the city of Longmont and I'm looking for a place and I believe in the comp plan of our goal for, you know, our environmental goal, and I want to be somewhere where I can just hop on the bus and if it happens to be out there, I can't, I have to have a car if I'm working at the hospital, you know, and I live out west of Longmont, I have to have a vehicle to get to work. And then you're talking about having a car, an electric car, but where are the charging stations? So you all, what have you all are doing? And I said, there are no bus routes going up for the high schools either. I said, if you want to talk about Boulder, I said, they all have buses at their high schools, we don't have buses at our high schools. And then Phil jumped in, that's what we're doing, Michael, in transit. I said, exactly. I said, why we, we have to think outside the box to do this. And I said, you know, anyway, I said, I understand, I said, we thank you for all you do, but I'm still complaining, just like we did in the emails too, so.
Good.
And, let's see, oh, Sister Cities. Everything is going on with Sister Cities, everything is on plan, on point, I guess right now. We got our dates for Japan finally, July fourteenth through the twenty-sixth. And so we're supposed to, right now we're trying to, we don't know how much the tickets are, they're probably around three thousand per person right now and it will be nine of us going to chaperones and seven students. In Arapahoe, everybody's practicing, doing their thing. They're each supposed to have a dance, that there's an American dance that they're going back to each location to do their American dance, they're trying to practice. Last year in Japan, they did Footloose and it wasn't that pretty. So if you all know of some choreographers, I told them I'm a founder one because they're representing the city alone.
Yeah.
So anyway, that was good. I also want to say I did not make it to downtown Longmont District Association, I mean, or Authority, I mean...
LDDA.
LDDA, because I was at the funeral and, but, you know, we, the hotel, they should be closing on that by the end of the month. Everything is working on that. What else am I on? I didn't go to the...
NADA.
NADA. I didn't, I wasn't able to go there. And that's next Thursday, the next meeting. And I just want to say the Life Skills was amazing. I did put you and you on there for possible collaborating for next year, so they do want to do it again. I have a meeting on Friday with the superintendent to see if he's willing to. He was very supportive of the Life Skills Fair and so just making sure he's still welcome, you know. Yes, that's why we have a meeting on Friday.
Thank you. The law comes down.
Yes, exactly.
Yes. Okay. You ready? All right, Suzie.
Okay. So the library was last night, so I'll go with that one. So most, and I noticed the museum and library, it was really talking about recruiting people for the board. People are getting anxious that we're not going to get enough people to fill these spots. So our current chair of the library board is term limited, so she'll be, you know, she'll be done, I think next month or last and then June if the new people. So they'll be electing a new chair in June.
It goes through June.
Through June, yes, so. And then, yep, so the five, yeah, June is the final meeting with current board members. So in the director's report and updates, we just got a chance to see, you know, the work that the library's doing. I think some of the challenges that they're facing is, and people have been, you know, they've been getting some people upset, items are on hold for a longer period of time because what they've had to do is really cut back on the number of items that they're able to, in their collections, that they're able to purchase. So for digital materials, the prices have gone up, so they're not able to purchase more digital materials or copies of a certain book or item. And so then when people place it on hold, they're having to wait longer for it to come in. So that's, that's been a hiccup in what they're trying to, you know, trying to keep it functional. You know, there had been, something that the board really wants me to understand and share out with you all is that the trajectory that it's on, it's not really sustainable in the fact that they have a lot of part-time employees or they have people who are doing a lot for a community our size. So we're really, you know, we're staffed as the way we were maybe twenty years ago, but the demand and the increase in population is, it's not sustainable. So last Wednesday, I went to the, it was on the tenth, the Pi, the Padres Innuo Grados in Education, their annual celebration. And Lillian from the library was there, our outreach coordinator, and she was out there and she's working with families and just getting the stuff done, but it was one person. So really to be able to have a team and so really, you know, just emphasizing the importance of a sustainable and well-funded library. And as a teacher, I'm speaking from the heart on that one. So that's, you know, we discussed that, you know, a point that they wanted to bring to me was, you know, we're in desperate need of funding. And so that's, you know, that's kind of what they wanted us to be, to have an understanding on. The annual report will be presented to council on April thirtieth, so they'll be coming at that time too to share more about, maybe going on at the library and outreach and all that. On May seventeenth, the library will be closed all day for an all-staff training and focusing on trauma-informed care, allyship, dealing with and coping with microaggressions that are occurring, you know, being front of the library and certain things that you have to deal with within the public, you know, how to navigate those situations professionally and also taking care of themselves. So that'll be happening on the seventeenth, I think, is that a Saturday? Seventeenth, Friday or Saturday? So there, yeah, there was a day where people...
It's Friday.
Friday, okay. That'll be the day that the library's closed all day. And, let's see, they did revise their form for people to submit if they want to have a book or an item evaluated. They did revise... They did revise their, the form. And actually, as I looked at it from this time to last time, it seems like it's more user-friendly and it's, it, it's rather than just people just filling out this whole blanket page of grievances, it's more, um, you know, it's just more itemized. And so people are real, you know, that, it will force people to become really clear on what they're trying to get across. It's not a matter of opinion, it's, you know, based on these factual pieces, that this is why I want this book reviewed. So we had a chance to look at that, uh, and that was based on what other public libraries are doing and utilizing throughout the state. For the museum, the expansion is, um, going as, as, um, as anticipated.
Closing my street.
They're closing your street. So they're working on the inner courtyard, it's being graded for drainage and hardscape. And their slab has been poured for the new perform, performance pavilion. Um, let's see, so, you know, they're doing, they're still getting donations in and, um, so that's, it's, it's, everything seemed like it's coming along pretty well. We discussed revenue and attendance. So it looks like Discovery Day's attendance from February of twenty twenty-three, they had eight hundred ninety-six participants. This time, one thousand one hundred thirty-two. Um, auditorium sales have, have, um, nearly doubled from last year to this year. And gift shop sales have increased by, um, a thousand dollars from last year February to this year February. So, you know, they seem to be, seem to be doing well. And, um, you know, again, they, they were talking, just concerns about getting board members and having those seats filled, so. And then there was some question on, and maybe Dawn can answer this, around board, current board members. Is it crossing any kind of line for them to go out and promote people applying? So I said, no, I know, but I don't want to, I don't want, I will double, I will confirm, but I, it seems like, you know, anybody can.
And we say that every time we send out recruitment announcements to secretaries and liaisons.
Uh-huh.
Please forward your board members, ask them to-
And, um, I didn't hear it so much at the museum advisory board, but at the library, there was a lot of concern around the, uh, the ethics. You know, just concerns about how that language is going to impact, you know, their ability to say anything about. So I think that's where that question came up, like, are we allowed to, to promote applying? Because I didn't know if it would impact and, you know, so they, they saw the language.
That was library?
The library, yes. And so I said, no, I don't, um, yeah, it doesn't seem like it would cross any ethical, you know, create an ethical violation for that. So, you know, just keep recruiting. Um, and then I think the archive was canceled last month because of spring break, like, there was a lot of conflict. A lot of people couldn't attend. So we are meeting at the end of this month. And the arts in public places, um, last time they met, we had our Longmont Housing Authority meeting. I wasn't able to attend, but it is this Thursday, so I'll fill you all in on the next. And youth council, they had a debrief of the Life Skills Fair and I think they were working on, um, helping applications, filling out applications and just working with, with youth on those things. So they're, you know, that, that room, would I attend those meetings? It's more like a working group, so I'm just kind of sitting on the side and, you know, I might answer, you know, give them a council update, but that's pretty much it.
Is it youth council?
Youth council, yeah, they, they do their, their thing.
Hey Dawn, I forgot something really sexy.
Ooh, sexy, go for it.
That, um, Becky Doyle-
Yep.
And, um, this, um, I don't remember who the consulting people are. And, um, we're giving an app. It is a pilot program for an app to let, um, let someone know when the train is coming. Um, so they did a demo last night, a demonstration, so it would let you know where the train is, where the train will stop, and, um, all you have to do is just look and see where it is in the city and what time it should be over, when it's moving, what time, so it's pretty cool, it's pretty cool. And so I can't believe I forgot that part, but that's like the best, the best part, especially after last week. So, yeah, it's a pilot program and I, I don't know when it will be completed, but Becky Doyle is the one who's leading that because, you know, her partner was the one who created the, that whole app anyway that we got awarded for and all of that with National League too, so. But, yeah, I know.
So, okay, I'll go fast and then you will leave for questions. Um, so I'm going to hit everybody. I was surprised that Natalie said that they were working on buses from east to west, I guess, when we've been asking for LX One to be restored for years and her says, she says the same thing to me. We're working on it, that's what she said last night too, about LX One.
Yep. She said, we're getting it back, they just don't know when, and it's all about resources.
Well, it was supposed to be last September.
Yeah.
And then it was supposed to be December and then January and, you know, I've worked with Natalie for nine years now.
Well, we're supposed to have coffee, so we can have, all three of us can have coffee then.
Are you going to set that up?
Yeah.
Okay, girl, girl. Somebody else is working on it, I love it. So we had a, a meeting this morning with the executive committee for FRPR and we are working on, what we know is that we need to move really, really fast. And, um, uh, I think that our manager, Andy Carcy, and with these bills, has kind of had a stick poked at him in saying, you're, you're too slow, what are you doing? So we talked, we're getting a, a survey out, a poll as to what people want. We're working on the ballot language, which is going to be a lot of, uh, a lot of input because the district has so many different populations in it that it's very important that that ballot language addresses everybody, not everybody's needs, but everybody's ability to interpret the language. And that's what screws up a lot of ballots, is that people just don't understand them. So, uh, we worked on that, we're also talking about, um, the tax, what, what will the tax for these districts be? So the, the SB one eighty-four, which is the big bill, um, which basically tells RTD that you need to finish the northwest corridor, and it also says that once you finish it from Denver to Longmont, then FRPR takes it over because of the different pots of money that can be used. Um, RTD cannot use federal dollars because they are under transit, not, not federal. So, um, FRPR has the dollars, but what the bill is going to do, that you're saying that they, what was that bill number again?
One eighty-four?
No, um-
Oh, fourteen forty-seven.
Fourteen forty-seven, yeah. So I understand why RTD doesn't like that bill. It is a bill to re-manage RTD, to cut that board down from fifteen to seventy people. And, um, part of SB one eighty-four says that RTD, CDOT, and, uh, FRPR have to work together and either come up with an IGA that is three-way IGA or come up with a transit authority type of, uh, deal. The CTIO got through with an amendment, I'm sorry, F, the one eighty-four got through with an amendment that said, the original way it was written was that there would be a three-dollar fee on all rental cars. And, um, they did like that because those dollars are going to go into CTIO, which is a, which is a group where our, it used to be H U T F dollars. It's very confusing, but they wanted only, they wanted all Colorado residents to be out of the rental car fee, three dollars a day. And, um, I don't think that passed because everybody uses our roads. But the way the bill was set up was that those dollars were to be used for rail first. So there was a lot of pushback on that and they said the projects that are in place should use those dollars first and then it should go to rail. So that, you know, that's all got to be worked out. But as soon as, uh, as soon as the governor signs SB one eighty-four and fourteen forty-seven, then Harold and I talked about having a community conversation to explain all of this because it's very confusing and everything I read has a different slant on it. So that nobody really understands how the whole thing is going to work. But I, I think it's really exciting and it is going to come whether people like it or not. And I just sent Harold and Phil a document telling instructions or, um, ideas on how RTD and, uh, MTRAC and BNSF want the train, um, I call it a depot station, has to be done with, with certain, uh, standards according to BNSF. So, um, just for fun, and this is what we talked about is that, you know, that little red train station? That is by the transit station apartments? We talked about moving that and using it as the train station because it's historical and it's old and it's cute and, um, adding on to it, of course, but having that be our train station.
Checking about the depot liquor store?
No, no, the one that is on Iberia.
The other side, yeah.
No, it's not on Iberia, it's on second, first. It's on the first. By the, by the railroad track. So here's the cheese importers cross the street and it is, and that little red train. So you're going to have to take a little ride and guess it.
I think it's like sandstone, that's what it's like.
No, it's just a-
Oh, I thought.
I don't know. So that, that is, to be honest, that's what I'm really working on most of the time um, because the timeline for this has been pushed up to three to five years instead of twenty. So it's like, whoa, we better get busy and start building this. Um, but again, until the governor signs these bills, there's nothing in stone. He needs to sign it probably in May.
Remind me what's going on?
Uh, SB one eighty-four, that just passed both houses with amendments. Um, and fourteen forty-seven is the one that, um, hasn't really gone to committee yet. It is being hashed out. And I know that RTD doesn't like it. And one thing I don't like about that bill is that the governor said that he's going to have two or three, um, at-large directors. But the RTD district is huge and our at-large director, there's no way they can cover that. I think that they should be appointed to a district or to a certain area to represent, not everybody.
Yeah, because you're going to be heavy in some area.
Yeah, it's going to be really hard. And the other thing I didn't like is that he wants to cut this board down to size pretty soon. We have a lot of historical knowledge there and, you know, Eric Davidson is so smart and he's turned that around. We're the only RTD transit agency that, um, is not in the red now. And it's taken him four years to get it into black. You know, it's like when you buy, when we bought our house, I wanted to do all kinds of fun things, but we had to replace the water heater, we had to fix some stuff. So we put a lot of money into the house, but we couldn't see any improvement, it was still the old house. So that's the way I feel about RTD at this point. They've made a lot of changes and they're working hard, but, um, just based upon what Natalie said is why I think it needs to be redone and totally in support of fourteen forty-seven. So, that's about it. I'm on the historical preservation committee, we had a meeting and, uh, I am at this point learning a lot. So I, I sit quietly and thank them for their importance because nobody's come to us with a project at this point, and so. Okay, Marcia, you have some questions?
I have, I have questions and it seems like it would be good to, to discuss minimum wage. Uh, because, you know, the small towns don't have to buy in. We can still have a reg, regional, um, district. If it's just Longmont and Boulder and Boulder County, that's enough.
The problem is, is that Boulder County didn't bother to ask certain, when they pushed us through, they didn't ask two of our largest employers in the county, the Boulder Valley School District or the St. Mary Valley School District, what they thought of that. And that seems to mean like a learned mistake on their part not to have done that. But I think there's other things that need to be fixed on this, uh, it's kind of got some issues. If we're going to do it regionally, then I, there's certain aspects of it that, uh, I think should be part of it, like, but that's just my opinion.
Well, yeah, thank you. I, I, uh, I, I think that, that, first of all, the commissioners are going to be the commissioners. I have stopped having expectations about the commissioners. But, but, um, Longmont can pass a minimum wage and, and say, we're with you, Boulder County, and we don't need any help to do that, although I, it would be great if the city of Boulder would do the same thing, right? But, uh, I, looking at it from another way, not the logistics of getting it passed, uh, but rather the, the impact on our businesses because, um, pretty much everybody in the chamber hates the idea. But, you know, when we were in the pandemic and all those businesses were afraid of failing and we, you know, it turns out that most of the businesses in the chamber have very little clue how to run a business. And, um, so, you know, we had, we helped, we helped them, you know, during the pandemic. We had, we and the Chamber and the EDP and all of that, um, the DDA mostly, I think. Helped them with, there was help to figure out how to do a PPP loan and, um, you know, stuff like that. Well, you know, I talked to successful businesses that are not yet huge and they kind of agreed with me that there are things, there are, you can make fairly minor changes in your business, like if you are a retail business, just making a, a ten percent change in your line of offerings, for example, could raise, if you do it carefully and, and start off selling something profitable with a high margin, um, it can, uh, without changing the character of your business, increase your margins enough that you could, you only have three employees that are at minimum wage. You know, you can, that it gives you enough to keep your business the same shape as before and pay that higher wage. And it seems to me that, that with we, if we could find some city funding and collaboratively with the Chamber and probably some, uh, some mover and shaker type businesses, you know, the ones that are, that are run by MBAs or, you know, people with a strong investment heritage or whatever, you know, or people with knowledge in the city. And we could have seminars, classes on, you know, how, how to improve your margins. Either, either by finding ways to save or by, um, by changing your, your product line if you're retail. You know, and I'm not that kind of a business person, so I couldn't necessarily come up with fifteen examples. But, uh, I think that the courses could be developed and offered and then the businesses are, are, will, at least they will lose their fear and understand that they have a support system. It's not that different than what sustainability does with small businesses to get them to, um, adopt, uh, sustainable practices in their business. You know, and they usually end up saving, they just need somebody to tell them it's possible.
So I, I think that's a good idea, but I don't think the city should run it. This would be a good thing to bring to LEVP and to, um, the Chamber.
Yeah, I think, you know, because the EDP is for it, they don't have a problem with, uh, mostly the ED, the EDP businesses understand that our economy will improve if they, if we raise the minimum wage. It's the Chamber people that have problem with it.
Well, um, so I talked to clearly- Well, um, so I talked to Claire Levy. We had a coffee and she said, she stated that she was way too early and went way too far with the minimum wage. And, um, I told Marta Loachming because she, um, you know, I said, my problem with it off the bat is our nonprofits. And, um, I said, I felt really, really bad because I thought it was Longmont the only one doing it. And I emailed Aaron Rockett and he said, no, they're not gonna support it. And then Lafayette Louisville, they all weren't going to support it. So I felt better that, okay, maybe there's something else there. Um, the nonprofits are the ones that I'm concerned about mostly. And some of the small businesses that, because of the family, uh, insurance that the governor has or the state does now, and they have to buy into it or at least, uh, provide something of their own like we do. Um, they said their costs have gone up because of that. And a lot of the nonprofits are not getting grants or donations for two reasons. Number one, a lot of, uh, write-offs on federal income tax came from donations and, um, philanthropic type of things. But now that it's been raised to $15,000 as the standard deduction, none of those donations count.
You have to be a big giver for, for that to count.
Right. So they don't bother giving their little donations that would add up to maybe $2,000 or, um, and, um, with property taxes going up and stuff. So I believe in the minimum wage. I just don't think that's the time. And right now.
Well, I, I've done a lot of thinking about this, too, along with you. And I, I think that, uh, the, the issue is, is that the big corporations will be able to live with this. They'll be able to, to live with that. And so that's, that's a given. The issue is, is that if that's the only types of businesses that we want here, that's probably not the case. So the small, you know, businesses need to have some sort of support to what Marcia's saying. Uh, I'm concerned about not having any tools, uh, for localized inflation uh, in the process here. Uh, I, as an educator, I'm a strong believer in some sort of, uh, like a certification type of thing where it's tied to it, but that's, uh, not in the legislation. And I think that's something that I would like to see because I think if you have to be a first aid certified, uh, you know, and lifeguard training and everything like that to be a lifeguard, you should be paid a little bit more because you're, you're taking on a bigger, more deep responsibility. If you're a certified bookkeeper, same thing, you're taking on a bigger responsibility.
Plus you're best in your training.
Yeah. And so.
But those people have to be certified to even get the job. It's not like you're gonna hire a, a, a lifeguard who hasn't got.
Well, and so some of the more low, uh, uh, other ones are like, you know, for food service folks, they have to have safe serve, uh, training and certification. And if you are selling liquor at a gas station or a grocery store, you probably have to be tip straight to know, uh, what the new licensing is and stuff like that. So there's certain things that.
I think that might be illegal. Let's run that past Eugene. We can't get into businesses until they can.
No, no, no. I think that's part of their, uh, to, to sell liquor, you have to have, uh, so I think it's part of liquor license process.
But then why, but then they couldn't hire any. My, my point is.
I think they do the training.
Usually they're trained.
I think they do the training.
And they're paid for the training, just like record centers pay for certification.
It's not our law, state law.
No, it's not our law. Yeah.
So we would have nothing to do with you.
I just think that certified, uh, employees should be paid more. And we also have to look for the fact that if somebody's a bookkeeper and they're getting paid $25 now, that the difference is around $9, that they need to be paid better at those locations. Or people would be like, why am I doing this? You know, I, I need to be paid at least higher than somebody doing minimum wage if I'm taking on this deeper role. And so that's, that's the only issue I think. I think though, if we are going to pursue a cask meeting, a public vote, people have to have an idea around it, not just us going and saying, we're gonna go ahead and go forward with this. And I think there's some mistakes that, that county commissioners realize that they made on this and they're going back, we're gonna try to correct. But I think there's, it didn't pass in, in Fort Collins when it was first presented, didn't pass in, in Boulder. There's really only one member of the Boulder council that's really pushing it. And so I just don't know if this is where we're at. I, I, I'm for the minimum wage, I just don't know.
I agree. I am too.
I think we're handicapping ourselves by not preparing for it, you know, whether it's three years or, or two years or something. I still think that, and I want to correct something that you said, assumed about what I was suggesting. I don't think the city should organize a class.
Oh, I thought that's.
I think, no, the city should put money in it and mandate it. But the.
Mandate what?
Mandate having such a class. Make sure that it, make sure that it exists, make sure that it's made available like through the Chamber. But I'm saying that the, the city, the city needs to be the instigator and the pusher, but, but not the administrator and not the brains of the outfit because we don't have that kind of expertise within the city. Um, but.
Okay. Just to clarify, who are we mandating it for? The business owners?
We're, we're mandating that it exists. The businessmen, the business owners don't have to take it, but they, they should realize that, that if they think they can't ever pay a higher wage, they've got, the problem is in their business, not to give us. But we're done.
Okay. So I do have one really fast question. When Sergio, when LPM and Sergio gave their update, this real fast, one, one sentence. He said that they want all of the, uh.
They want to increase the.
The pay, the PPs.
Yeah, they want all of that funding. Really fast. What do you think about that? I'm just curious.
Have to prepare. Um, yeah. Whoops, Harold.
Wait, yeah, I feel like there's more.
I think, uh, the money that we get from the, uh, franchisees, I think council has already given us that direction. I think what they're wanting is additional funding, which will have to come from the general fund allocation.
I think there's more to it.
Is that correct, Dylan?
He didn't, he did say.
Sounds right to me, but I'd wanna go double check.
Okay, yeah.
I feel like that, that warrants a deeper discussion.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Joan, I do have something to say about that, though.
What?
Really quick. Um, that, um, I told Sergio something different when he asked my advice about making, I said, you know, you're doing that wrong. Like what would it take? They're not gonna have an answer for you. You should be setting out some goals, that's the, some concrete measurable goals and then challenge the council to say, if we achieve this goal, would we, um, could we get extra funding from the council, both to support that goal and to, uh, support the next goal? So in other words, he should be asking for something concrete and measurable instead of just saying peace or may I have some more?
Yeah.
So I think we should do anything about it.
But I look at it differently. This is a, this is a business. If he is saying, we're gonna offer more under your contract and then that's gonna cost more and then we would have that discussion. But just to have more money to increase the other side of their business, that's what I'm thinking of. So come back with the contract and tell us, do we need anymore? That's a conversation they need to have with operations because we don't know if that contract would evolve.
I could weigh in on this. Put them on Birdwatch and then on my Bobby Quirk.
Birdwatch?
Yeah, Birdwatch. When he asked, what would it take? I actually responded to that because what I noticed is that the, the paid memberships are going up, but they are maybe 1% more than the total. So it needs to be a higher percentage of the whole. So there's a measurable goal.
Yeah.
And that would, and that would provide more funding because they are making.
If they have a, a, a large increase in paid memberships, they don't need.
He's a little concerned that, and Marcia can speak to this, too, that they're dealing, they're competing with Tinker Mill, uh, a little bit. So that's.
I, I did have a conversation about LPM with some of my, um, clients and some that aren't even my clients, but just businesses. And the thing, the truth is that, um, small business owners work 60 to 80 hours a week. So doing it themselves is very hard for them. They really wanna be able to pay a student maybe at LPM to do it for them, but they like the idea and the pricing is good at LPM for a small business to utilize. So my other suggestion for Sergio would be impacts businesses in the town. That would be very helpful to the city.
Oh, that's a good idea, I think. If, if what you mean is, is LPM should have product offerings that it staffs and then, and then business, or volunteers, because you don't have to be a student to volunteer.
Yeah, yeah.
It just all seem young to me.
Me too. You're all young.
I don't know. Um, but anyway.
But yeah, so it's the same idea. We don't have to.
Yeah, choose one from column A and one from column B instead of, instead of having to be, do all the creatives yourself.
And then I'm gonna throw out for the small businesses, not every business is meant to have a large margin of product. A good example of this is Walmart. I know you hate it when I talk about Walmart, but they are, their whole business model is built on volume with small margins.
Right. But Walmart's not a small business either.
Because they're very excess, successful for it, with it. And another organization that also works on small margins are stockbrokers. I know. So you're thinking, well, there's actually a lot of money in small margins because we get both of those examples.
Yeah, and it's not that small margins are the be-all and end-all of the answer. Increasing part of your margins is, is one way of make, making a business more viable enough to pay a higher minimum wage. The example is Miko Coffee versus Z's because Miko has a few really high-margin things going on in that store and therefore they're a more resilient business than some of the others.
So this is like five years, it takes five years to achieve profitability often as an average. And there's a good reason for that. Some businesses are more.
Is this what you wanted to Birdwatch, too?
Yes.
All right.
I have Birdwatch. I have one of the Birdwatch.
Is it time for an executive session?
It is, exactly.
Let's. This transition.
So we're not talking about.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, Juneteenth.
That was the best thing to talk about.
Thank you. So Juneteenth, I love Juneteenth, but here's my concern. Do we wanna make it before this council turns over? Think about, we don't need to answer it now, but think about how can we put this in perpetuity, kind of like Cinco de Mayo, um, that we continually fund it either out of council contingency or do we try to put it into the budget? Um, because it is a very successful event. And, um, if not, they're going to have to come back every year to a different council. And if they have a different mindset, they may not want it.
Except for, let me just clarify, the pieces of the sponsorship that you all approved, that puts Juneteenth on the list for, what did you call it? For the rest of time?
Their existence.
For those pieces, and I can't recall them off the top of my head. You might, Shakiti will let us.
Sold the stage.
The sponsorship, those pieces would follow no matter the cost, that event.
Sold the stage and having.
You have to do that every year. You're on the list.
Right. And the use of Rosebel Park and, um, or any city facility and also the trash.
Okay.
So that part, yeah.
So council pays the first year in the sponsorship policy and the council contingency and then we budget then for the, the next year. So that becomes supported in perpetuity in part, at least.
Okay.
Unless the council comes back and says, we don't want this, we're changed. So they have to make a concerted effort, effort to overturn it.
Okay. I, I didn't understand that. I thought that. So you only come to council contingency for things above and beyond the cost?
Yeah, because, you know, the first year.
Yeah.
There was nothing. I started it from nothing.
Yeah, yeah.
My paycheck. You know, and so then you all supported left last year and then this year. And so, um, yeah.
Phew. Thanks. Thanks for that clarification.
That was a quick discussion.
We were out of time.
We are, but I don't see any attorneys.
All right, Harold, am I supposed to, you're gonna join a different team? Molly's gonna log in, right?
Yeah, they need to be, we let them know.
Yeah.
Or they're in the hall.
There are people in the hall. We will grab them.
Yeah, I better get off of this one.